Is the prayer and the pledge, and Mr. Boykin's going to lead us in the prayer. And Mr. Brantley, Brantley Moody, would you lead us in the pledge?
Would y'all please?
He has. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds that bond us together. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect those who live, work, or play in our greater Charleston County community. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we may accomplish, is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Minutes of September 10, 2024.
Move to approve with commendation.
Seconded. Middleton and seconded by Mr. Pryor. Any additions to leations? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item, recognitions and resolutions.
Motion seconded.
Seconded. Request to adopt the National Recovery Month in addition Addiction Professionals' Day Resolution. I'd like to recognize staff from Charleston Center. Would y'all come forward, please?
Do you want to vote on that while they're walking?
Yeah, we need to vote on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Come forward, please.
A resolution of Charleston County Council, National Recovery Month, September 2024. Recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. Whereas mental and/or substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas by seeking help, people who experience mental and/or substance use disorders can embark on a new path forward toward improved health and overall wellness. And whereas the focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate their journey by spreading the message in communities that behavioral health is essential to overall wellness, and that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover. Now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby join in the observance of and proclamation of the month of September 2024 as Recovery Month in Charleston County. Also, whereas addiction professionals are uniquely qualified frontline healthcare professionals, and whereas these dedicated professionals are committed to increasing public knowledge of addiction and to enhancing the care of individuals, families, and communities through treatment, education, and prevention programs, now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby join in the observance of and proclamation of September 20th, 2024 as Addiction Professionals' Day. Charleston County Council, Herbert R. Sasse III, Chairman.
Thank you all very much for what y'all do. Y'all doing an incredible job.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. You want to take this? I'm sorry, Dr. Shandron isn't here, but.
I'm here. I can speak for her.
Okay, that's great. Would you please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Sasse and members of council for this important resolution. In August, we took time to honor the lives lost and families affected by overdose during Overdose Awareness Month. At Charleston Center, we are dedicated to raising awareness about drug overdose prevention in our community. As September marks National Recovery Month, we celebrate everyone on their recovery journey and proudly acknowledge the unwavering commitment of our addiction professionals who make recovery possible in all its forms. I want to highlight a recent event where security and Charleston Center team worked seamlessly together by administering Narcan in our building's lobby to save a life from overdose. Their calm and precise execution of Narcan administration was crucial in this individual's recovery. We are both grateful and humbled by their actions. Access to the lockbox in the lobby entrained staff saved this individual's life. I want to recognize members of the Charleston Center team who are here today who have been essential in saving lives. We have Thomas Young, Bridgette Nickel, we have Maureen Jones, we have Yolanda Sibley, we have Jasmine Ford Teter, and Shanique Brat Smith, and we have Alicia Cox. We're not in my order. We thank you for your time.
Thank you all very much. You want to move and get a picture? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to disband county council and we'll go to our public hearings. First one being issuance of general obligation bonds for capital improvement plan slash equipment and fire protection.
A public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 24, 2024, before final approval by council of an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $91 million general obligation capital improvement bonds and $4,200,000 general obligation fire protection service bonds of Charleston County.
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up? No speakers. Thank you very much. The next one, St. Andrews Public Service District issuance of general obligation bonds.
A public hearing shall be held by the County Council of Charleston County beginning at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 24, 2024, before final approval of an ordinance authorizing the St. Andrews Public Service District Commission to incur not to exceed $815,000 of general obligation indebtedness.
Thank you. Anybody, none, not ones with that one? Okay. HUD Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, PY 23.
Charleston County is submitting the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report to HUD for approval. The Project Year 2023 CAPER provides an opportunity to evaluate Charleston County's progress in carrying out the priorities and specific objectives identified in its CAPER. All interested parties are encouraged to attend a public hearing on Tuesday, September 24, at 6:30 PM in Charleston County Council chambers.
Three for three.
Yes, sir.
Financial incentives for East Coast CES of South Carolina Incorporated.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 24, 2024, at 6:30 PM. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and East Coast CES of South Carolina, which was previously known as Project Coast.
Okay, none, none again. Financial incentives for Shipyard Creek Logistics Center LLC.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 24, 2024, at 6:30 PM. The purpose of such public hearing is to receive comments regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement by and between Charleston County and Shipyard Creek Logistics Center LLC, which was previously known as Project MAC.
None, okay. I might have to.
15 people signed up for public comments, though.
Thank you. Might have to put out a BOLO for Anthony.
Right.
Okay, public comments.
The first person is Chris John, followed by Esther Doyle, and then Lee Miller.
Good evening. My name is Chris John. My wife Jill and I live full-time at 247 Pelican Flight Drive on Deweese Island. You all have heard from me vocally and in writing several different ways, so I'm going to attempt to keep this fairly brief tonight. I'd like to remind you that if you choose to move forward with the short-term rental provisions of your proposed text amendment up for Deweese Island, you are doing so in the face of significant feedback opposing it. Your staff has tallied written opposition from 78 people versus support from 49. 22 people have spoken across three meetings in opposition versus aid and support. In fact, at the last one, no one even bothered to come to your hearing to support these provisions. Could that be they know the deal is already done? Bottom line is, there is zero consensus on the island. The arguments against these provisions are many, including infrastructure concerns such as our aging water sewer system that's not been studied, we have limited parking that cannot accommodate this extra level of guests, there are legal questions including uniformity, its arbitrary nature, and the question of why now? Most importantly, the potential environmental impact this could create on our precious island that is unique in Charleston County. Please do not abdicate your responsibility so transparently and in such a short-sighted way. Do not transform Deweese Island from the most protected area of Charleston County to the least. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Esther Doyle at 293 Old House Lane. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sustained Deweese Coalition, an advocacy group made up of almost 100 residents and friends of Deweese Island who are committed to ensuring a sustainable future for the island's wildlife, as in fact, its entire ecosystem, its residents and the staff. We strongly oppose the proposed amendments to the zoning and land development regulations ordinance as they directly contradict both the conservation easement in place that protects this island, as well as the community's mission upon which residential life on Deweese Island was founded. Now, as you consider the proposed text amendments, we urge you to carefully review the comments, both written and spoken, that have been presented in each opportunity for public input. The comments clearly demonstrate a strong majority of those in opposition to the proposed amendment and the negative irreparable effects they will have on Deweese Island if passed. As stated, across community commentary, the wildlife conservation areas and infrastructure, including water, sewage, and transportation, simply cannot support the potential population and traffic increase on Deweese Island for which these amendments would allow. To not take these comments and testimony into serious consideration when making your decision is not only to do a great disservice to the entire community, but to the future of an ecologically significant island. You have critical opportunity, critical opportunity to be an active participant in protecting our environment and our communities for future generations to learn from and enjoy. We implore you as fellow Charlestonians and South Carolinians to take this opportunity to help us protect this island. Sincerely, the Sustained Deweese Coalition. Thank you.
Lee Miller, Jeffrey Stallings, Brian Hand.
I'm Lee Miller. I have owned property on the island for over 20 years. We bought on the island with the understanding that it was a conservation, within a conservation agreement with DNR, and we were obligated to protect our ecosystem and our environment. I had all kinds of planned things to say tonight. I do not have a written report. I've already turned two of those in, and I've attended the planning meetings and the last meeting that you all held. I listened to the prayer that was made tonight, asking us for wisdom, also asking us to take care of humanity. And the island was developed in an effort to have man live in coordination and harmony with nature and our ecosystem. Unique, Deweese is unique, which should be a star in Charleston's crown, not someplace that we change to make it financially advantageous for a few people who are standing up and saying that they represent the property owners of Deweese Island. They don't. We are very strongly committed to everything that DNR originally put forth. We signed an agreement when we bought property on the island. We have brought our children and grandchildren up on Deweese and want it to remain in the condition that it's in now, and this will not happen. You have received all of the facts and the reasons why short-term rental would be detrimental to the island, and I stand behind that. Our community is divided, and conflicted, and sad, and angry. We have lost owners who have been so disappointed in what's gone on. And do not misunderstand that the people that have brought this amendment are not the majority of property owners. They do not resent, represent. Also, two of our board members are those who have brought a suit against Charleston County over this discussion. Thank you.
Jeffrey Stallings, Brian Hand, Lori Hammond.
Good evening. I am Jeffrey Stallings, and I live on Deweese Island with my wife Sally. Today, I want to speak to you about myth versus reality. I understand that the text amendments are being shopped as home rule, like Sullivan's Island and IOP. This is a myth. This council is well aware that home rule does not apply to Deweese Island. Home rule is the right to self-govern that belongs to local governments. Unlike Sullivan's Island and IOP, Deweese Island is not a local government. The county cannot delegate that authority to Deweese Island, which is an unincorporated part of the county. On the one hand, Deweese Island must rely on the county to make reasonable rules and regulations. On the other hand, the county must, has a responsibility to make sure that the zoning change is reasonable and not arbitrary. It is a responsibility of the county to make sure that the zoning change is consistent with federal and state law and the county's comprehensive plan. The second myth that is being circulated is that this was a mistake not to include Deweese in the 2018 STR ordinance. There is absolutely no evidence in the minutes from the county council proceedings before the ordinance was passed that Deweese was intended to be included in the ordinance. If those minutes existed, that would be a mistake. Also, since 2018, notice of violation have been sent to property owners on Deweese who violated the STR ordinance, and the county's lawyers have defended the STR ordinance in the lawsuit for three years. So what is reality? The county has so far ignored an overwhelming majority of comments and speakers in opposition to the text amendments. The reality is that this has not been a fair and transparent process. Recent emails received from the county from a FOIA request show that the president of Deweese Island Board was communicating with the county on the text amendments before the public hearings and before reaching out to the island on what we wanted. At the same time, he has been suing the county for three years for STRs on the island. This is a huge conflict of interest, and the county should never have dealt with someone who had this conflict. The reality is that in 2021, two Deweese Island Board members, including the president, have been suing the county to allow short-term running. And the alleged justifications of home rule and mistake being shopped now are like putting lipstick on a pig. The text amendments are an effort to settle a lawsuit against the county, and this is wrong.
Did you about finished?
Yes. Approving the text amendments hurts not only you, not only your constituents on Deweese, but the public interest as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Hand, Lori Hammond, Pearl Askew.
All right. My name is Brian Hand, 326 Pelican Flight Drive. Thank you for that introduction, Jeffrey. I am here as the president of the Deweese Island Properties Owners Association today. The POA is a group of elected board members. We're elected by over 100 people on the island. We represent those folks. I feel like I do represent those folks. POA would like to thank council for your consideration of this text amendment. We like to show our support of its passage. The POA is well-suited to manage any short-term rental program in accordance with this ordinance change, should the community elect to allow them. We've had survey after survey showing that the community has broad support for a limited and well-regulated short-term rental program. The community does not elect to allow them, then we won't be issuing permits to allow them. It's as simple as that. Joel with the Planning Commission has indicated that you all require, he will require a permit from the POA to allow short-term rentals. Again, we really would like to thank Planning Commission for supporting this text amendment. Thank council for your consideration. We look forward to handling this matter on Deweese Island, and we encourage its passing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lori Hammond, Pearl Askew, Craig Askew.
Hello, I'm Lori Hammond from 367 Pelican Flight Drive on Deweese Island. I am for short-term rental amendments. I appreciate you all taking the time to hear everyone on this issue. I feel certain that the POA Board of Deweese Island is well-prepared to take on the issue. I feel very strongly that this issue should be turned over to the property owners of Deweese I feel like that the island is a South Carolina resource, and at this point, a few private owners have decided that they want to control the island, and they want to keep everyone else off the island. And I feel like that that is a radical idea, that there are student groups, that there are other folks that would like the opportunity to come to Deweese, and that they should be allowed to do that, that there should not be a small group of property owners that puts up a gate and says, no resident of South Carolina that doesn't own property here can come on this island. DNR spends resources that are state resources to monitor the island, so the state and the residents of this state should have the opportunity to come on the island. So I appreciate you all taking the time to consider these amendments so that the POA could have the opportunity to possibly start allowing people to come on the island in a monitored way so that the resources are not negatively impacted. Thank you.
Pearl Askew, Craig Askew, Alicia Riley.
Good evening. Askew, 977 Gadsenville Road, and this is in Oondah, South Carolina. I just want to thank the council persons who have helped the Ten Mile community thus far to go through our historic processes, the council members who have supported us. I just want to say that we really do appreciate it. It will help the community at large, not only currently, but for generations to come. But I also wanted to mention that the Tisdale Track, which is probably will be rezoned R4 based on the applicant, the fact that the council offered the applicant the opportunity to ride his generational wealth through the Green Belt Initiative, he could have gotten what he wanted, as well as helping to preserve the community that he grew up in. We feel a little sad about that, but I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you, and as we go forward to help to preserve this historical district, we really want to continue that support. Unfortunately, with R4, the environment changes is going to be very, very heavy. The flooding that came even with the king tide last week was just, it was just, it was not good. And I believe that everyone here in the city of Charleston, as well as in the county and rural area, understands that. But in the meantime, I say thank to each of you, and unfortunately, the gentleman did not accept the Green Belt Initiative. Thank you so much.
Craig Askew, Alicia Riley, Thomas Tisdale.
Good afternoon, council, public. My name is Craig Askew. I live at 987 Gadsenville Road in the big town of Oondah. As we continue to grow, again, I come with gratitude, y'all, but a heavy heart at the same time, thanking you guys for the work you put in and the patience that you've put in to give the community time to understand the comprehensive plans that, you know, we're going to protect Gullah Geechee communities. These, we think that these communities are valuable, and this is something that's groundbreaking. And I think Ten Mile has been the tip of spear trying to work with this and get it right. So I want to give you guys some credit for that, but at the same time, knowing that as a small community, becoming a historic district, obtaining the S3 zoning, the support behind the moratorium, it's been a lot. But putting in uncharacteristic, huge building patterns that are just, are out of step with small Gullah communities like Ten Mile will be super impactful in a negative way. And like Ms. Askew said, the drainage problems, the infrastructure problems, last week, we had a king tide and high tide, and Seafood Road was not passable. Luckily, the county police came and, you know, blocked the road off. That road, you can't go past that road. Otherwise, they're going to be accident. We've shown y'all that. We've demonstrated that. But yet still, you guys still think that, you know, for property rights, which, you know, we can still achieve that goal, that financial goal, by trying to keep some of the space green. But again, I just want to, I want to thank you guys for coming this far with us, but I think going back to R4 and that large of a track is going to be very, very, very detrimental to what we're trying to achieve in Charleston County for Gullah Geechee communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Riley, Thomas Tisdale, Rick Miller.
Good evening, council. I think this is my fifth time speaking in front of all of you, and it is freezing in here. So my next request, please raise the heat. All right. I'm here to, I'm sorry, I'm freezing. I'm here today to strongly urge you not to approve the proposed text amendment for Deweese Island. I'm Alicia Riley. I live on Deweese Island, 247 Old House Lane. This amendment strips away critical protections by exempting occupancy, parking, emergency services, and other guardrails for short-term rentals. It would expose Deweese, an ecologically pristine barrier island, to unregulated rental activity, turning the restrictive RM zoning category on its head. Even more troubling, this amendment doesn't apply uniformly. It only affects Deweese while Goat Island remains unchanged. This unequal treatment not only violates state law, but also amounts to spot zoning, where a small area is singled out for different rules, favoring a few over the broader community. This raises serious concerns about fairness and equal protection. And let's be clear, this amendment is an arbitrary solution meant to settle a lawsuit, not a genuine effort to protect the public interest. It benefits a few owners, but you've sat here and listened to us over five meetings, come out, and you have all of the public comments and supports that you have been sent over the last three months. I urge you to reject this amendment and preserve the integrity of Deweese. Thank you.
Thomas Tisdale, Rick Miller, Jill John.
Good evening, council. Again, I want to thank Charleston County staff and council for hearing my family's request for going back to the original R4 rezoning at our property. Thank you, and we appreciate it. I just want to put the record clear on this. My family has neither committed or turned down any type of communication with the Green Belt. We want the focus to be on the R4 rezoning. There was an opportunity for us to come to council and ask to be grandfathered in. I'm thankful that the past two readings have been positive, and currently urge you all to continue and support us with that request. Thank you.
Rick Miller, Jill John, Jim Doyle.
Good evening. I'm Rick Miller from Deweese Island. Thank you all, each one of you, for your service to the county. It's very important. And I know you all have been going through all this information. A lot of it has been given to you, both pro and con, against the amendments for the rest STR regulation being applied to Deweese. for the rest STR regulation being applied to Dewey's Island. I'm here to ask you and urge you to please reread, reconsider. Because I really feel that if you look at it, you will find that the STR amendment applied to Dewey's Island is negative, have consequences which would not be acceptable to the people who live there, the majority. Thank you.
Jill John, Jim Doyle, Rita Worthy.
Hi, my name's Jill John, and I live at 247 Pelican Flight Drive on Dewey's. I know you all have looked at the comprehensive plan. And I know I've talked about this before, but I was really moved by this part of the comprehensive plan to preserve, enhance, and revitalize natural resources, such as rivers, creeks, fresh and saltwater wetlands, aquatic and wildlife habitats, beaches and dunes, groundwater, forests, farmland soils, and air quality, and take actions to mitigate potential negative impacts of growth and development. Dewey's Island has at least eight of these resources. We would like to protect that. Dewey's Island also uses our resources to host several school group tours during the year. We also have a full-time naturalist on staff who hosts these events. And not only that, we have college research, et cetera. Dewey's Island is not a closed-off island. We also do allow 30-day rentals. I hope that you all will vote no to short-term rentals and help protect the island. Thank you.
Jim Doyle, Rita Worthy, Nicholas McMahon.
Good evening. I'm Jim Doyle. I'm a 20-year resident of Dewey's Island. And I'm here to speak against STR. As Jill mentioned, there are a lot of activities and ways that people visit our island for educational seminars, et cetera. It is not closed to the community. You know, we've covered you guys up with letters and comments, and I think a lot of pertinent facts that I do think bear investigation and also consideration. This is a very important issue on a lot of different levels. And I would ask that please objectively consider our situation. But more importantly, the effect on this pristine, unique island. I would hope that no other agendas will get in your way. It's really up to you guys and ladies to make the tough decisions. And I know it will be a tough decision. But I've listened to a lot of comments. This is not a business question. It may be a revenue question for some people. But whether or not the POA can manage STR is not the issue at Dewey's Island. But it's the right thing to do to ban STR and all the negative things that go along with it. Thank you.
Rita Worthy, Nicholas McMahon.
Good evening. My name is Rita Worthy. I'm at 3875 Watson View Drive. First, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for all that you do for Charleston County and all that you've done and will do for Ten Mile, where I live, grew up. Some people sell their property because they can't afford to pay the taxes. And some sell because they are convinced, they are convinced by others that their land is not worth much. Some sell because they are lured by the idea of getting what they think is a lot of money. Community members are even convinced by others that their land value has decreased because the zoning went from R4 to S3. If the land doesn't have much value, then why does the developer still want to buy it? Are they convincing property owners that they want to give them more money if the property is zoned R4? That's the question. Again, thank you all for all you do. May God continue to bless you.
Nicholas McMahon.
Good evening. I hope y'all are doing good tonight. First, I'd like to apologize for my attire. I just got done running. And so I'm going to keep this short and sweet so I don't clear this half of the room out. I am for amending the zoning on Dewey's Island to allow short-term rentals. My family owns a home on Dewey's, and it is my inheritance. And I would like to know and to have a say in the future in what I can do with my property. Dewey's is an amazing resource. It is part of the state of South Carolina. And I feel more than just that the private owner should have an opportunity to visit Dewey's. I feel that these proposed amendments are a step in the right direction. Y'all enjoy the rest of your evening.
That's it.
Okay, we're going to reconvene our county council meeting for third reading ordinances for A, St. Andrews PSD issuance of general obligations bonds. Ordinance, third reading.
And ordinance authorizing the St. Andrews Public Service District Commission to incur not to exceed $815,000 general obligation indebtedness and the levy of ad valorem property taxes in the St. Andrews Public Service District to pay debt service thereon. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. For B, issuance of general obligation bonds for capital improvement, plan, equipment, and fire protection. Third reading.
And ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $91 million general obligation capital improvement bonds and $4,200,000 general obligation fire protection service bonds of Charleston County, South Carolina, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. For C, financial incentives for Shipyard Creek Logistics Center LLC.
And ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, the county, and Shipyard Creek Logistics Center LLC, which was previously known to the county as Project MAC, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors collectively the company, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project. Two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. Three, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project. Four, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes paid by the company under the agreement for establishment of a multi-county industrial business park. And five, other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one nay.
Thank you. For D, financial incentives for East Coast CES of South Carolina, Project Coast.
And ordinance authorizing, one, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, the county, and East Coast CES of South Carolina Incorporated, which was previously known to the county as Project Coast, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors collectively the company, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project. Two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. Three, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project. Four, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes paid by the company under the agreement for establishment of a multi-county industrial business park. Five, allocation of fees in lieu of taxes paid by the company under the agreement for establishment of a multi-county industrial business park. And six, other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one nay.
Okay, for E, 927 935 943 Gadsenville Road, ordinance, third reading.
And ordinance rezoning the real properties located at 943 935 and 927 Gadsenville Road. Parcel identification numbers 614-0000060, 061, and 062 from the Special Management S3 Zoning District to the Low Density Residential R4 Zoning District. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one nay.
Okay. Third reading, excuse me, second reading ordinances, financial incentives for Cross Point 9 LLC. Second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and CK Cross Point 11 LLC, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates collectively the company, whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with the company, providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for the addition of the company property in a multi-county industrial business park, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes paid by Charleston County and Colleton County under the agreement for establishment of multi-county industrial business park and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one nay.
Okay, 5B.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Where are these homes? It doesn't have, I mean, the street or avenue or road, but where are they located, sir? Pardon if I didn't read the notes on it, but where are these houses?
That's Ashley. What is West Ashley? North Charleston is Brant. Allwood is North Charleston. And these are the homes that we originally bought, 18 homes.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
It's different areas.
Okay. Charleston Homes Phase 3, 1912 Morgan Avenue, ordinance, second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1912 Morgan Avenue, totaling approximately .25 acres. Parcel ID number 4751200037 to Delancey Street, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay, Charleston Homes Phase 3, 1980 Dogwood, second, ordinance, second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 1980 Dogwood Road, totaling approximately 0.2 acres. Parcel identification number 3551500037 to Charleston Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay, 5D, Charleston Homes Phase 3, 9789 Pete Wood Drive, ordinance, second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 9789 Pete Wood Drive, totaling approximately 0.22 acres. Parcel identification number 3880100057 to JNW Construction and Design LLC. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay. 5E, Charleston Homes Phase 3, 6306 Brant Street, ordinance, second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 6306 Brant Street, totaling approximately 0.29 acres. Parcel identification number 4751200060 to Narrow Gate. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
5G, Charleston Homes Phase 3, 2225 Doris Drive, ordinance, second reading.
Allwood.
Allwood.
Yes, sir.
5F, Charleston Homes Phase 3, 7646 Allwood Avenue, ordinance, second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 7646 Allwood Avenue, totaling approximately 0.23 acres. Parcel identification number 404000105 to Charleston Revival. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman? Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes. And just to protect the record, I'm going to read that TMS number again. It's 4040800105.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
5G, Charleston Homes Phase 3, 2225 Doris Drive, ordinance, second reading.
And ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property located at 2225 Doris Drive, approximately 0.27 acres. Parcel identification number 3551100020 to WEH Incorporated. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Move for approval on items 6A and B.
Second. The discussion?
Pardon me?
I'd like to have a discussion.
So you want to do them singly?
Yes, in the discussion.
Allow that, Mr.?
You take them, 6A, move for approval.
6A, move for approval.
Does that mean we do have the discussion?
Motion's on the table.
Well, should we have the vote first, or should we discuss first? Let's have the discussion first.
Okay.
6A, Natural Resource Management Zoning District, Dewey's Island, request to consider. Let's discuss it.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, first, I'd like to thank all the people that came out tonight from Dewey's that recognize the exceptional nature of coming out. What that means is taking a vote to come here. And also for those that live there, taking a vote to go back tonight. This is in my district, and I feel special. I know I voted one way last week, but I thought long and hard this weekend on it and listened to everything. And I ran for counting council to preserve and protect what's unique and special about where I live. And I look at what our forefathers and those that came before us. My own father-in-law was part of the Civilian Conservation Corps, who built the dykes on Cape Roanoke. They had the Cape Roanoke Wildlife Refuge. The forefathers created the Francis Marion National Forest. We have Bull Island. We have Capers Island. And I was part of the effort to preserve our maritime forest and Sullivan's Island. All the same arguments about changing, you know, the same arguments could have been made against creating the Francis Marion National Forest, the Cape Roanoke. made against creating the Francis Marion National Forest, the Cape Roanoke. And we have some of the most pristine land anywhere in the world, East Cooper. And after thinking long and hard on this, I don't know the people that live there. I know many of the people who want the short-term rentals, but you can't let that sway you. I went there, and it's one of the most remarkable places anywhere in the world. It's like living on Bull Island. In my understanding, from studying it, after profound thinking on this, it was created as a conservation easement. And that's what it was created as. And to change that would change it, to a way that, and I remember living on Isle Palms at 8th and Carolina, when they changed the beach from Breach Inlet to the Windjammer, they tore down and gave the right to build the beach for short-term rentals. And now you have nothing from Breach Inlet to the Windjammer, but many hotels. And I do think that we have a unique area there that needs to be protected. And I can't argue the point that it would change it to have short-term rentals there. It was created as a conservation easement. And I see this, I listen, we have people from the historic settlement communities, just like the forefathers of the people who lived there for their blood, sweat, and tears, preserve that, what's unique and special in the creation there. That wouldn't be here now but for the struggles of those people. It's not the same struggle that the people on Deweese have, but it is preserving something unique and special that exists in East Cooper, exists in Charleston County in America. And I don't, I could not live my conscience to create something that would alter that so future generations wouldn't have it. I don't think we can look at this and say, what we are contemplating doing wouldn't irrevocably change that. So I urge on this, this is a difficult choice, because I know it'll make a lot of people angry, who I know, but you have to do the right thing. And my opinion is that we should say no in this because we'd irrevocably put at risk what was a conservation easement. And if we vote to change this, we can change any conservation easement theoretically in the future. That's what a conservation easement is, is no limited growth. And people that bought there knew it was a conservation easement, and that's what it's intended for. And it's not for commercial development, if I understand, the development of what it was intended for. And that's why I changed after careful consideration to say no in this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
We already made it in seconds.
The motion was to approve it?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Is that Mr. Darby as well? Yes, okay. All right. An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ordinance number 1202, as amended, to clarify the uses and development standards for the Natural Resource Management Zoning District at the following document locations, Chapter 4 Base Zoning Districts, Chapter 5 Overlay and Special Purpose Zoning Districts, and Chapter 6 Use Regulations.
Thank you. 6B, proposed amendments, request to consider.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Chair, move to approve 7A, B, and C? Second.
I need to read this ordinance. And ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ordinance number 1202, as amended, to reduce parking requirements for passive recreation and implement the removal of density ranges from the planned development zoning district requirements and the conservation subdivision regulations at the following document locations, Chapter 4 Base Zoning Districts, Chapter 8 Subdivisions, and Chapter 9 Development Standards.
Sasse?
Yes, sir.
Clarification, but I would ask the attorney on this.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Kabrowski mentioned the easements, the conservation easements that are out there. Are we doing anything with that, or is that DNR? I thought that was DNR.
Yes, sir. So DNR holds the conservation easements, and they have taken the position that short-term rentals do not violate their easement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further question? Hey, Mr. Pryor?
Yeah, and I'd like to say too, on these easements, you know, I've always been against easements that doesn't have public access. So what I mean, this easement doesn't have public access. If we wouldn't have moved forward this, this ordinance that we have, is that correct? All right. You know, I keep hearing everybody saying easement, easement, but this is only for folks that live there right now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think that's correct. I mean, it's a conservation.
Without public access?
I don't know that there's any limitation to the public access.
Well, only if you get permission.
Yeah. This is an easement that the Department of Natural Resources holds. Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, it doesn't have public access.
I want to ask you a question, too.
You can go.
Thank you. Can I ask a question since we had the discussion? Anyway, I wanted to ask, a conservation easement, as I understand, does not allow for commercial development. Wouldn't short-term rental be a commercial development? It seems to me if you're renting your property for profit, that's a commercial development. Am I wrong?
I'm not in the position to answer that question, Ms. Kabrowski.
That's my interpretation of it.
I understand.
Thank you. Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Chair, the ordinance for short-term rentals was set up, and it's considered a residential use, not a commercial use. You have to get to the point where you're a commercial guest house to rise to the level of commercial use, so it is not considered a commercial use. And secondly, you know, the passage of this amendment is not guaranteeing that there will be any short-term rental. It just allows the folks that live on that island to govern themselves and make their choices through their elections or their own property owners' associations. So the property owners, by majority, will decide what, if any, short-term rentals will be allowed.
Right. And I do believe that we were told that 30-day rentals are allowed out there now. So those are allowed. Okay. Is there any further discussion about this item?
They're move to approve 7A, B, and C? Second.
Moved and seconded to approve 7A, B, and C.